Welcome to the November 30th zoning board of adjustment. Our next meeting will be December 28th at 6:30 right here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ben, would you read the preamble, please?
Yes. Good evening to those in attendance and watching at home. For the benefit of those who have not previously attended a zoning board hearing, procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. However, the chair may change the order at their discretion. The board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, abudders, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of their petition and read through their responses to the criteria applicable to their case, allowing for the board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances establish the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant approval to a petition, and it is a petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met each criteria. Following the presentation, the board will open the floor for public comment either in favor or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner in public. However, discussion will not be allowed to devolve into a back and forth arguments. All comments made should be directed to the chair. Should a question be asked, the chair will pose the question to the petitioner. Afterward, the chair will close the public hearing and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition. At this time, please silence all mobile devices.
Thank you, Ben. What I'd like to do now is swear in any people that are planning on speaking tonight, if you could raise your right hand. I swear to tell the whole truth and not but the truth. Thank you. We only have three members on the board tonight. So in order for your petition to pass, all three of us will need to vote in favor of it. If one of us declines it, it will fail. So at this point, I would like to give, we have two petitioners, I would like to give you the opportunity to either continue tonight and take the chance with three of us saying yea or nay, or you may reschedule and come back at the end of December the 28th and make another attempt with a full board.
Can we request you would have her hearing vetoed?
No, we would make the decision now so that we would reschedule you and not go through the process tonight. If we go through the process, then our decision will be made. Is the, are both parties here? James Gadbois, and you agree to continue? Okay. And, missing page two? Startin Realty? Okay, so both of you would continue? Okay, thank you. Okay, what, we'd like to begin with James Gadbois, petitioner owner, variance under section 2.02.1.1C.2. Point C of the zoning ordinance to permit a detached ADU that is larger than 50% of the size of the primary dwelling unit, the PDU. The parcel is located at 85 Patton Road in the R1 Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation District, tax map 6C, lot 394, case number ZBA 2022-43. If you could state your name?
Yes, I'm James Gadbois.
Thank you, your speaker is on. And if you'd like to tell us a little bit about this, and then we'll go over your five points that you filled out?
Okay, yes, I'm James Gadbois, I live at 85 Patton Road, I built a three-car garage. I recently was divorced and I presently have been there since 2003. And I work in Boston as a union carpenter and I pay for the place myself. The only one living there is myself and two dogs. And my plan was to put an apartment above the garage. It's just a studio. And that would be for one person, and that would help with my expenses, whereas I pay them by myself. That's where this is, that's where this got started, and that's what we want to do.
Okay, you should have filled out a form, which I believe I've got right here in front of me, with the five criteria, do you have that with you?
I don't have the copy of that, I didn't, they, they took the copy, I haven't done this.
So... What, what we... Okay, no, we'll certainly work with you. What we need to do is when you filled out the page with the five variants, that questions? That's what you, yeah, that's what you filled in. Okay. What we'll do is we'll do step by step, each one, you will read the title of, like, number one, granting the variance. You will explain how you feel about that. You will hesitate, and then the board will have an opportunity to ask questions if we do have questions. If there are no questions, then you'll go on to number two, then three, and down to number five. Okay, so you could start with number one, please.
Okay, so question one reads, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because I wrote, added square footage to the top of this building would have no effect on the public awareness because you wouldn't even see it, it's basically a 10 by 10 area, which is 100 square feet.
Any questions? Okay, number two, please.
So two, this, in the spirit of the ordinance is observed because I imagine when dealing with square footage and making a limit, I didn't bring my glasses, keeps the ordinance to a standard. So I guess what, how I perceived that was, I didn't want to encroach on what their criteria was. You know, if there was 1,000 square feet, I could, I could see the point, but with the 100 square feet, it was basically a bathroom. And I wrote that, I basically, with an extra 100 square feet, I didn't think that it would, you know, overstep my bounds as far as keeping the ordinance as standard. If that's the best way.
Ben?
Okay, so you referenced that you're building an apartment over the garage, you understand that you're building it to the ADU regulations?
Yes.
Okay, common utilities?
Right.
Okay.
Right, I mean, it was, there's, it's more electrified there than it is in the actual house. But like I said, I kept it pretty, I guess the best thing to say is when I built it, I made a, an incove. So you'd have to see pictures, I don't know if there are a picture of it. So the person that would live up there has a separate entrance. And you can't even see the second door, so I build for a living, so when I designed the building, I kept in mind, you know, we didn't want to make it look like there was like a duplex on top of, next to my house. You know, so you've got three-car garage, and then there's one door that you see, so. Yeah, so that's basically part of the standard that I wanted to keep. And then when I did the square footage, and we talked, I talked to Robert about it, when I, when we figured it out, what I don't know, there's a knee wall there, so if you take the full square footage, this is just a side note. So you take the full square footage, but then in the back, it's a 12 pitch. So you know you're gonna walk into the side of the slope of the roof. So if you come in six feet, stand a wall up, which goes the whole length of the building, well, you technically lose six feet by 40 feet, which is 240 square feet. So that's why I was saying with the 100-square-foot encroachment, I'm not sure if they realize that there's actually, not, it's not the actual building size upstairs as it is the square footage of, say, the foundation and the garage itself, which is 24 wide by 40 long. You understand what I mean by that? Yeah, so.
Would that, six foot by 40 feet be, still be storage?
Well, I mean, there's a knee, it's a knee wall, I mean, you, I don't even know, there's not, it's just a pie shape, so it's, I mean, I guess you could put skis or something long in there, but it's not really a...
Okay. Any other questions?
Because of that 12 pitch, now, if I would have built a knee wall four feet high, well, now you could have put closet doors, you know what I mean? So that space is what I want you guys to know that is being lessened in the actual room itself, which, like I said, is six by the 40, which is 240 square feet.
Okay, no, oh, Robert? Just for clarification, so the board understands, this is a detached ADU, and in this case, the primary dwelling unit is 1,232 square feet. For a detached ADU, you're allowed either 1,000 square feet or 50% of the size of the main house, whichever results in a smaller ADU. So in this case, the house being 1232, he's capped off at 616 square feet for an ADU, and he's proposing one that's slightly larger. That's why he's here.
My, well, my question is, ADUs for, that's usually is defined by a relative or family member?
No, that's not, no.
No longer?
That is no longer.
Okay.
Okay, number three, please.
Granting this variance would do substantial justice because it would allow more space for the studio apartment. So I didn't, I mean, I'm looking at this, and, and number three, the benefit of the petitioner should not be overweight by harm of the general public. Yeah, so I actually feel like that's not even a, that's a non-issue.
Any questions? Okay, number four, please.
Number four, granting the variance would not diminish the values of the surrounding properties because it does not diminish the surroundings because it is inside, and the added interior space cannot be seen from the outside.
Questions, Ben? Okay, number five, unnecessary hardship.
Okay, unnecessary hardship owing the following special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Explain how no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public, purpose, and the ordinance provision, and the specific application of the provision to the property. As I have stated, we are only trying to use the upstairs garage as an ADU. I feel the community and neighbors are not affected in having the complete upstairs utilized. It was recently, I was recently divorced and have been struggling to make ends meet. B, the proposed use is reasonable, one, because I live here alone and I have no help, and it's substantial with the bills, like I had stated, and having one person's studio would supplement all the monthly and yearly expenses.
Any questions? The, you had mentioned the 10 by 10, that's a little bit bigger than a bathroom, it's close to a bedroom size.
Well, it's a closet, even.
Is that, it will be used as a closet?
Well, that's actually, if you think, the bathroom that I put in, it was on the gable end, is six. With the knee walls, I think it's 12, all right? So that's 72 square feet, and then there's a closet on the other end, which is six feet by no more than five. So there's 35, say, square feet. So you think the combined size of both of those rooms is almost equal to 100 square feet?
Okay. Any questions? Okay, I'd like to close this portion, and I'd like to open it up to the public. If anybody would like to speak in favor of this motion? Seeing none, I would like to open it to people who are against this motion. Seeing none, would you, do you have any final comments before we close it for discussion at the board?
Yeah, I don't know if you've been by the place, but when I bought this place, it was 1790. Had no trees, no bushes, no walkways, no driveway. I put over $100,000 into this lot, and including $85,000 to build the garage of my own money. And, look, you know, what transpired over the, say, how long have I been there, almost 20 years? I think I've cleaned that corner up pretty well, and then my neighbor next door, so it's, we're looking good for the community, I think. That's all I want to say.
Great, thank you. I'd like to close this public and open it for discussion on the board.
Um, pretty straightforward. I don't have any particular issues with it.
And looking at this, I think that he's met the criteria. 100 square feet does not expand the building, expand the footprint. And I think he's well within reason to what he's asking, and...
I'd like to make a motion to approve variant, James Gadbois, petitioner owner, variance under section 2.02.1C.2.1C of the zoning ordinance to permit a detached ADU that is larger than 50% of the size of the primary dwelling units. The parcel is located at 85 Patton Road in the R1 Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 6C, lot 394, case number ZBA 2022-43. There are no... There are no, oh, hold on a second. Staff, can I have some... Okay, um, there are no staff criteria?
No conditions, however, the law now has required that you need to make a finding of fact determination on the petitioner's responses, if they were sufficient to address that. You'll see a staff suggested motion, I would suggest you use that instead.
Okay, so I'll use this instead. I make a motion that the board finds the petitioner's responses to the statutory criteria are sufficient, provided each criterion is met, and the board adopts the petitioner's responses as the board's findings of fact, and further to grant the variance under section 2.02.1.1C.2.1C of the zoning ordinance to permit a detached ADU that is larger than 50% of the size of the primary dwelling units.
You all sit, love it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Petition, variance made by Patrick, seconded by Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Abstained? Passes 3, 0...
One.
One. Okay, just to remind you that there is a 30-day window that somebody could object and, and slow this process down for you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. You want to take over? I'm gonna continue. No? Okay. As we continue, we have a fourth member that has joined us. So to change that, we have four members, you have to have three members in agreement with one potential disagreement.
So if two people disagree, the motion will...
Right, right.
Or actually, now Chuck's here, so now you have a full board.
So now we have a fifth.
So now you have a full board. So now you're all set.
And also, is, are you staying as chair, or is Rich gonna take over?
Actually, I think Rod should continue as chair.
You're gonna wanna swear Chuck in, 'cause he's not gonna be an alternate.
Thank you. Chuck, would you be so kind as to fill in for Ms. Christensen? Thank you. So we now have five members on the board. This next petition is Startin Realty LLC, petitioner owner, special exemption under section 2.02.3C1 of the zoning ordinance to permit a gasoline fueling station use in the C2 General Commercial District. The parcel is located at 376 DW Highway in the C2 General Commercial Aquifer Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay District, tax map 4D-3, lot 2, case ZBA 2022-44. If you could state your name?
My name is David Fockingham, Will Clifton Barton.
Okay.
Has your microphone lit up green?
Bright green.
It is now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, if you'd like to tell us a little bit about it, and then we'll get into the five criteria?
Yes, so Startin Realty owns the Patriot Car Wash at 376 Daniel Webster Highway, and they are proposing to install a three dispenser gasoline and diesel dispensing station. The existing car wash is proposed to remain. They would also like to expand the building to include a small convenience store and a drive-through coffee shop, understanding that the gasoline use is the reason we're here this evening. The site proposes to widen the entrance onto Daniel Webster Highway. We did a traffic study. We're proposing to widen the highway slightly and basically connect the turning lanes for the two shopping areas, centers that are on either side of us, to create a turning lane throughout the whole area. The car wash as a base use warrants a turning lane, so anything that we propose requires, you know, improvements to that road to improve traffic safety as well as pedestrian safety. We're also proposing a sidewalk across the front. The gasoline, the fuel dispensing system will consist of two 15,000-gallon double-wall tanks for gasoline, premium, and diesel. The tanks are to be double-wall, all the piping is double-wall. The dispensers will sit on a standard dispenser sump so that everything is, is fully contained, all the sumps, both underneath the dispenser and the tank, are monitored. There's a tank monitoring system, so if there's any leaks or water gets into any of those systems, there's an alarm that goes off on the site. This is all, you know, required by the state for underground storage of petroleum products. As I mentioned, we're proposing three dispensers, each with two hoses. This will require a fueling pad where the cars park when they're getting fueled. That pad is proposed to be equipped with a positive limiting barrier, which are the grooves that you see around the edges of concrete pads at gas stations. They're designed to hold five gallons of, if there's a spill, hold up to five gallons. That is a minimum requirement by the state, given the size of this pad, it holds about twice as much.
Okay. We have any questions before we add the criteria on the board?
Actually, I do have a question.
I do too.
You go first, 'cause I don't really know how to word mine.
Do you have, can you pull up the plan of what this is gonna look like when it's built? Or is that what I'm looking at now?
That, this is the plan of what it's gonna look like when it's built, so... Let me zoom in a little bit.
So I don't, I don't see how you're gonna fit all this in there, but...
So this is all gonna be added to the car wash?
Correct, correct. So on this site today, there's that center island in the site where all the vacuums are.
Could you take a pencil or a pen and kind of, or, yeah, there we go.
Yeah, here we go. So today, there's an island right here.
That's the vacuums.
Where the vacuums are. And the site circulates in this direction around through the car wash. It, it, today already has a one-way-in, one-way-out access to the road. We are proposing to expand that, so you have the one-way-in on one side, and then a left and a right turn coming out. So circulation through the site will, will move in this, in this direction. So the, the vacuumed islands come out, and those, that's where the dispensers are proposed to be installed. And then that leaves the rear of the site for the queuing for the drive-through and for the car wash. Parking will remain at the edges, so parking along here. The vacuum islands get replaced in this area here, and then there's parking along this side. The proposed convenience store is quite small, so there, there's only a few employees, so the parking requirements are fairly minimal. There is quite a bit of parking out there today that is underutilized.
So the proposed, the proposed coffee shop is a drive-up only, there's...
Yeah, yeah, there's no seating proposed, you can't go in, it's drive-through only.
Okay. That's, uh, I used to, I used to manage a car wash when I was in college, and I know in the wintertime, when you have a nice day, you can wash 500, 600 cars. I've done it, and I just, I, I mean, I don't know, traffic-wise, I think you're gonna be tight, but... I mean, I see what you're, I see what you're proposing, but I really, I've been amazed to see how they do on a, on a nice day in the winter when everyone's trying to get salt off their cars, and they got 400, 500 cars going through there. But yeah, that's, that's gonna be tight.
The circulation pattern for the car wash doesn't, doesn't change. It is an attended facility, so there's no, there's no, you know, there's no payment kiosk or anything, someone comes out to your car.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Takes payment.
Yeah. Be tight. And then the cars coming around the, the donut shop or the coffee shop there, they're gonna come around, and we're now... So the property line seems to be on an angle.
It is.
So walk me through, how do the cars, what, can you, you got your mouse there, can you walk me through, how do the cars actually try to get out of the donut shop area?
The way it's proposed is there's, there's two windows here.
Yep.
And then the cars continue straight through, and there's a drive that's constructed along the property line, and then it merges with the exit from the car wash.
Okay.
And then, excuse me, uses the same exit from the site here.
Be interested to see if that looks like that, it's gonna be tight, but yeah. Okay, cool, thanks.
Bet you.
I think my question was really more about the, the traffic coming from the drive-through, so that's going right up against the property line?
Yeah, there's, there's five or six feet there adjacent to the property line. It's, it's an open, kind of grassy area now, it's where the recycling system for the car wash is.
Okay. I guess I'm, I think my question's more directed at, at Robert. That's, that doesn't require any kind of variance to have traffic up against the edge of the park, of the property? No, only structures need to be set back, the driving lane does not matter.
Now, you said that's part of the car wash is recycling, you mean the water reclamation systems?
Yeah.
Are they gonna move the water reclamation systems?
No, we avoid it.
Oh, you do?
Yep, yep, there, it's in three tanks, which are right here.
I'm looking on them over here, head view, I see them, okay.
What was one of the comments that came from the sewer department was more information on how that system works, which I've asked the owner for.
Any other questions before we move on to the criteria? Chuck?
I'm just curious, that I don't see any electric charge facility.
We haven't proposed any at this time.
I was just curious.
You're talking about for electric vehicles?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's not, it's not intended to be a, an area where people stay for a long time. But if the board feels that that's important, we can look at having that added. I'd, I'd have to ask the owner if they want to add that.
The board is not requesting that.
Okay.
That would be the owners, and then should the owner decide on that, then you would deal with the planning board on that.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, if we can move on to the five items of criteria, please?
The application we filled out had four items.
To clarify, this is a special exception, not a variance, so there's only four criteria?
There's no hardship?
Correct. Actually, with special exception... And actually, with special exceptions, um, unlike a variance, a special exception is allowed, so we're not.
Okay.
We're just making sure that they did the paperwork appropriately with a special exception.
Thank you, okay, if you could read each one and then hesitate between the next to give us an opportunity to ask questions.
So A, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use or uses in terms of overall community development. Uh, this is in the um, commercial district, it is surrounded by other commercial uses. So this is an appropriate area for a gasoline dispensing station uh along a major road within town. And as it isn't allowed use with a special exemption.
Questions?
I guess, so my only question is. And by the way, this has really very little to do with the, the uh, the proposal and more to do with the, 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 the concept. There's a lot of competition on D W highway for both. I'm, I'm just curious what differentiators there are with this particular.
That was brought up by the planning commission when we came in for a sketch plan review about eight months ago. The owner feels that the combination of the car wash, the drive through coffee shop and gas, gas will differentiate them, this site from others.
Okay, number two or B?
B, uh, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Again, um, this is a commercial neighborhood, got shopping centers on either side. And we are proposing to uh expand the, sorry, extend the turning lanes to provide. Queuing distance for people turning into the site, um, as well as improving the access to the site. I think yes, and there, there is a residential development across the street, but. That's buffered by um, existing woods and horseshoe pond.
Okay. Questions? C, please?
Uh, C, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, because again, we are improving the, the access, vehicle access. As well as the road to provide turning and queuing. And as requested by the planning commission, we are adding a sidewalk across the front. Um, it is connecting to a sidewalk to the south. Um, there is no sidewalk to the north, so it goes to the property line and terminates there.
Questions from the board? D, please?
Adequate and appropriate facilities provided for proper operation of the proposed use, proposed uses. Um, so again, we've done traffic studies, we've done circulation plans. You know, shown that, that we can get, you know, delivery trucks in and out of the site safely. We can, you know, bring a tractor trailer into the site and, and have it exit. We provide the appropriate queuing lengths. Um, if both the drive through business and the car wash were busy at the same time, there is plenty of space to queue cars to the site.
Question?
Yep. Someone wants to bypass, someone, I don't know. I, I, I hate doing the hypotheticals, because we could do that all night, but someone wants to get out of line at the donut shop, I mean. Is there enough room for them to get around it and, and bypass everything and pass the drive through window or do they have to wait and just drive out?
Um, there is enough room to get past the drive through windows. Um, but if there is a long queue, um, there will be a couple cars. You know, at the back of the building.
Yeah, because I'm looking at it, you can't really, once you kind of commit to that turn.
Yeah.
At the top there, you're kind of in that.
One of these two vehicles here.
Yeah.
Or these two vehicles here, you might have.
I was actually going all the way back a little bit further to.
Yeah.
Yeah, there.
Yeah.
Once you commit to that, and this looks like you are, you're, you're pot committed at that point, um.
At that point, you're getting a copy or a car wash.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, I saw, I just, I, I mean, you know, someone changed their mind, they gotta, oh, something comes up, there's no way for them to really get out of the line.
Yes, they, these, these vehicles back here would be stuck.
My, that, that was one of my questions, the other question is, is that where that dumpster is? How are you, I mean, are you getting anything a, 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 a dump vehicle back, I mean, so those lines queued?
So the, the, the dumpster servicing will have to occur off hours. Okay. As well as fuel delivery will have to occur off hours.
Yeah, that was my other question, is how do you get an eighteen wheeler in there?
Yep.
And, and I mean, and around the building as well.
So the, the, the fuel delivery actually will come in and can make this movement and go back out.
Oh, okay, there'd be that much room?
Yep.
Okay.
There's enough room there for, because a, a fuel delivery tanker isn't as big as a, as an interstate. Like box truck, um, the, the uh trailer is shorter.
Oh, okay.
So it can, it can make that movement there. And, and it does have access, you know, to part of the concrete pad in the back. So it can, it can pass through that, through that direction. But yeah, fuel deliveries and, and trash hauling will have to occur in off hours.
When you said that uh, the dumpster and the fuel and stuff will be in off hours, what's the anticipated operating hours for the? Well, the car wash is obvious, but for the donut shop and the fuel?
Uh, the fueling will be. Maybe twenty four hours.
Makes sense.
Yep, um, as an un, as an unattended facility in the state of New Hampshire, it would then have required to have, have fire suppression systems in place. The coffee shop, you know, you're talking early in the morning, you know, six A M through afternoon. The, the car wash currently, I believe the hours are only like eight to five right now. But again, it's an attended facility, so it's not open twenty four hours, there's no way to make, take payments for that.
Thank you.
Ben, I have a question, you, you mentioned several times a convenience store. Is it a store housing all kinds of, you know, edible merchandise like a seven eleven?
No, no, because it's, it's only gonna be a few hundred square feet, so it doesn't have the, the space to be something like that. But you're talking, you know, windshield washer fluid, wiper blades, a few small snacks. But it's not a full on convenience store like we think of as a seven eleven or something like that.
So.
But it's a, it's a small retail space, which exists there today.
So they're gonna be able to walk in there and buy stuff?
People can walk in there and buy stuff, there's a bathroom.
So where do they park their cars?
So you've got parking here along the building. You also have, you know, the spaces at the, at the dispensers, and then you've got parking over here.
So you're gonna have pedestrians crossing. Several traffic flows.
If, if someone were to park here, yes. But realistically, it's, you know, people who are parked at the dispenser or parked here by the building.
Where's the entrance, the pedestrian entrance to the?
Here, to the, to the convenience store?
Yes.
Yeah, right here. So you, you wouldn't step out into the traffic lane.
So, oh, so that's more, more of a part of the car wash than the donut shop?
Yeah, they're, they're separate.
Okay.
They're totally separate.
That's right.
Yeah, the coffee shop is a standalone.
Okay.
There is no seating in there, people can't go in there and, and get something, that's only drive up.
That's, I thought you had said that earlier, but then you said people can go in and buy stuff, it's like, okay.
No, no, it's just.
Okay, thank you.
The retail space is to the right of the car wash, right?
This, 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 there's an existing retail space, attendant station and retail space in here along with the bathroom, so we're looking for, proposing to expand that. But again, it's not gonna be what you think of as a standard seven eleven or Cumberland Farm.
Yeah, that, that's why I was, because I, I think to your question, that's gonna be the coffee shop, that's gonna be the convenience.
But that, that's what I thought, but then when we talked about. Possible customers going in to buy things, it's like, okay, now they gotta walk around the car wash.
No.
But you've explained that, thank you.
There's no, there is no pedestrian access to the coffee shop.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Chuck, you also, I'd like to open this up to the public, if anybody would like to speak in favor of this petition. Seeing none, if anybody would like to speak against this petition. We have one person. If you could uh give her some room and allow her to come to the microphone. Sure, if you could, if you could come down to the microphone, just identify yourself.
And just please make sure you direct the questions to us.
Yeah, yeah, that, that microphone's fine, yes, the light's still bright green.
Okay.
Identify yourself and then you can ask your questions and then we'll direct it to gentlemen.
Okay, my name is Katie Little and I live in an adjacent property. Um, my questions are related specifically to the development of this lot as a neighbor. Uh, a resident of Horseshoe Pond.
Okay, thank you.
Um, let me just open my notes, I don't have a copy of the. I guess it's, a copy is right here that I can use. Um, I just questioned um whether or not the site is an appropriate location for a gas fueling station. Um, I live in a residential condo nearby and um. There's a lot of residential condos in that area, so I almost consider the neighborhood residential in nature, I know it's a commercial lot. But um. My particular development has forty nine units, there are a couple hundred units across the street. Um, some new ones currently being built, so there are businesses in the area, just not um, you know, commercial industrial use. So I just am here to raise the question of whether or not it's appropriate to have a fueling station in, in this particular neighborhood. Um, and then I related to item B, whether or not this will adversely affect the neighborhood. I'm curious about the proximity to the pond and the environmental impacts and whether or not that will impact our neighborhood. Um, currently, there is a lot of runoff into the Horseshoe Pond watershed area. Um, and. I'm just here to ask about the proximity of the gas station to the pond, I think there is. An environmental requirement in the state that says, and you know, a gas station has to be at least two hundred and fifty feet from a pond, and I think we're pushing that proximity. So I'm just here to ask the questions and get answers as to how this will impact the um.
Okay.
The neighborhood in terms of the environmental quality.
Do we have a microphone that he can speak into without coming up, in case she has a follow up question?
Yes, the one in the back.
If you would like to grab that microphone and maybe you can answer her question about the, your protection against the runoff into the. Um, the pond opposite to get, you know, potential gas station.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so the site is, does propose to improve the stormwater system that's there. Currently, there are two, excuse me, two or three catch basins on site that infiltrate. Um, we are proposing to upgrade that system with a pre-treatment. System including an oil water separator. Uh, petroleum products are less dense than water, so they float, so they stay in there. Um, we are mimicking the existing runoff patterns, this site actually doesn't discharge. Uh, to the road, it's kind of a low air, a low point in the area. Um, with regards to the setbacks from uh waters of the state for underground tanks. The requirement is seventy five feet from waters of the state to a, any portion of an underground storage system. Um, we are two hundred and twenty five feet, give or take a little bit, from Horseshoe Pond. We were here a couple nights ago for the conservation commission hearing, because we do, are required to get a permit from the state. Uh, for work within the shoreline buffer, because of the work in the road and the work at the front of the parcel. But we'll meet all the state standards as far as uh double wall tanks, double wall piping containment systems. To, to offset those impacts from a gas station.
Thank you, does that answer your question?
Um, so you said the site um drains to the back, it doesn't drain towards the front of the site across the road down the hill?
No, it, it does drain to the front, um, but there's a catch basin. That's a short, it's a good plan, but there's a catch basin that's going to be located right here. That, that's the low point of the site, everything drains to there.
So it just filters through the ground?
Yeah, we're, we're, we are proposing a infiltration system. Um, the site has great gravelly and sandy soils. So mimicking what it does today.
What happens if uh there's an issue with one of the pumps, like a leak?
So you have the positive limiting barrier that's around the, the whole dispensing system. That can hold up to five gallons, the oil water separator can als- also can hold, I don't, I don't know how much, like five hundred gallons.
But the low point where you're saying the accumulates.
The, the catch basin discharges to a roll water separator. So because uh petroleum products float on water, the water goes out, but leaks. You know, diesel, gasoline, oil, they all remain in that tank. But it won't be discharged to the, to the subsurface.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, I think speaking to item A, whether or not, I, I don't know if you're able to speak to whether or not this is an appropriate, an appropriate location for this type of use. I know it's in a commercial district, um, but there are, in recent uh planning board approvals have been. A lot of residential uses approved in this commercial district lately, and there is a lot of pedestrian traffic. Um, these are, you know, I, I think that people live in this area, there's gonna be um off gassing from the fueling. You're going to smell gasoline if you live nearby and um. I think it, although it's a commercial lot, I think it's more of a residential neighborhood. Uh, from my experience, I'm not from Merrimack, I got here two years ago, I've lived here two years, but that is my experience of, of where I live.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I do have a question uh for you though, um, Thea Butter. I'm looking, so I, I'm just looking at the property on the map here, you said you're adjacent?
Um, in an adjacent property, I'm in um seventy three Horseshoe Pond.
You're across the street.
Across the street. But our property is technically considered. I guess it's in a butter because we, our property would be affected by the, the site.
Directly across from D W highway.
Right.
Yeah, they, they own the, the slope between, that, that part of their common land. So what it's like there.
I think maybe that rich.
I, I, I drive by this place probably five times, six times a week, and for the life of me, I can't picture it in my head, that's.
It's direct, almost across from King Cone.
Oh, yes, okay.
I think it's, they changed the name to D W Way or D W Place. D W Drive. And then you've got Island Pond, the road there, and then you've got Horseshoe Pond, um, the development.
Yeah, our entrance is down towards King Cone, my unit is all the way in, so it's a lot closer to the gas station property.
The high numbers, okay.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just trying to imagine some, I'm looking at my map, like, wait a minute.
Okay.
I don't know what I'm looking at, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
I, I'd just like to comment on the, the vapor. This system is equipped with a vapor recovery system.
Speak into the mic so it's on.
The, the proposed gas station is equipped with a vapor recovery system, so when fuel is delivered to the site. The vapor that's in the tanks gets moved back to the truck, it doesn't get discharged to the air. The only time that air enters the system, air only enters the system, it's when fuel is dispensed from it, it pulls air in, but when fuel is delivered to the tanks, that vapor is moved back to the truck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, and I'm, I'm hoping this is due to regulation, not related to this, that uh, I went to a newer gas station that was filling their tanks. And I couldn't smell gas while I was filling my truck, so, I mean, other than the, you know, power to obviously smell the pump. But I'm used to, you know, I think, you know, to her point, I'm used to going to like mobile gas stations and you can smell that driving by, you don't even have to pull in.
The, 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 the way that the, the tanks are vented, fresh air can only go into the tank. But when a large quantity of fuel is delivered, that vapor is moved back to the truck, the vent cap for. The tank requires uh two and a half pounds of pressure to allow something out, so it's only an emergency vent.
I see what you're saying, okay.
Do you have any final comments before we close it?
Unless the board.
Before we do that, is there anybody else who would like to? Make a comment against this petition? Seeing none, any final comments before we close the public and?
Further questions for me? Further questions for me?
I don't have a question. I do have a comment. I, I don't, I don't know if we, I don't think we take a look at this, but, uh, this has the potential, I think, to. Because there's no traffic light there. This has the potential to impact traffic on DW Highway, particularly around five PM. When I was driving home from Boston and it's, it's a mess.
To his point though, the gas, the, the car wash closes at five. So, does it?
I, I don't recall the exact hours of the car wash.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, I mean, so like I said, years ago, I used to run a car wash most time, close by five, six. Usually close by five. I mean, just that's, that's just, I, I mean, but that was, I'd be honest, I'll perfectly be honest, I age myself here. That was like thirty years ago. So I don't know what hours they keep now, but I can't imagine five o'clock.
I was gonna say the gas stations I go to, I'm, I'm in the.
Gas station, yeah, I could see the gas station.
No, I mean, I mean, the car washes, I've had, I've been going to gas stations, I have, you know, seven, eight o'clock at night. So it's, I think it's possible.
Like I said, I, I, you know, stand corrected.
I drove the site, uh, uh, late in the afternoon and I think it was between, uh. Either right, a little before five or a little after and there was a sign, car wash closed. So they're not running the car wash at six and seven at night. And I doubt they're running it.
Interesting.
I think it might be open a little bit later during the summer hours, but. Yeah. But I think to Rich's comment. There could be a traffic problem first thing in the morning, people grabbing their coffees, coming and going, and of course the gas station. And at any given point, if there's an accident on Henry Burke, traffic gets, I'm not, I'm just making the comment. I'm not. Or, or against my comments.
The other thing too, and I, I guess it really, this is dependent on what coffee establishment goes in there. The Dunkin' Donuts right up the street. Early in the morning, that line is wrapped around the building.
Yeah.
Like, and if that happens here, that's. I don't know. I, I, I don't, I don't, I, like I said, I, I don't know that that would be the issue with this particular place. But I would, I would be worried that might box people in.
Okay.
Just to add, we have done considerable work on a traffic study.
Okay.
And looking at the lights on either side of this, of this property. And which is how we arrived at the need for a turn lane. So the people trying to turn into the site. Are not blocking traffic in other direction.
Okay. I think we've mostly had our board discussion, but I'm going to officially close the public portion and officially open the board discussion.
I mean, you talk about the traffic, I mean, you know, King Cone, any day during the summer. I mean.
Yeah, but people can go, you know what, I'll just go to Hayward's. When it comes to gas.
Yeah, that's, well, yeah, I, I see what you're saying, but.
Any further comments amongst the board?
I, I don't have anything else to add. I, I, other than when I took a look, I like I said, years and years and years ago, years and years and years ago. Ran a car wash. I think it looks a little tight. Doable, I, I, I guess, but it looks tight, if you ask me.
I, I think, I think if people use it through experience, they can. Work their way through it in a reasonable amount of time, they'll do so. But if it's. Cars just jammed in the lot there, you know, you keep driving by. Like I go to King, I go to Dunkin' Donuts. And if I see the cars all wrapped around, I don't turn in. I've got my coffee maker at home. So.
Or one of the other multiple Dunkin' Donuts.
So I think, I think the traffic becomes a self-managing process. Based on that day and your prior experience.
And I think the, uh, within about a half a mile, I think quarter of a mile, you've got three other gas stations.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Between Prime, New World and. Okay, do I have any motions?
I'll make a motion. Given that this is a special exception, I.
Is that the, is that the right one?
That's for variance.
That's okay. Sorry about that.
I make a motion that the board finds the petitioner's responses to the ordinance criteria are sufficient. Proved each criterion is met and the board adopts the petitioner's responses as the board's findings of fact and further. To grant the special exception under section two point oh, two point three C one of the zoning ordinance. To permit a gasoline fueling station use, or fueling station use in the C two general commercial district. Where the condition that the petitioner shall obtain site approval plan. From the planning board for the addition of the gasoline fueling station use and convenience store use to the car wash use. And should the board grant the special exception, it should be conditioned on approval from the planning board, which. I thought that was already part of this.
That was a part of the motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I guess I'll pay attention.
No, it's, I honestly, I didn't. Second.
Thank you. Motion to grant by Rich, seconded by Ben. All in favor? I pass this five zero zero. Thank you again.
Thank you for your time.
Thirty day window that somebody may come in and. Appeal. That completes our petitions. Robert, do you have any comments?
As has been noted tonight, in staff memos, we've started adding some suggested motions to try to help you out. In, in event that you're going to either grant or deny something, we can't explicitly make recommendations to you. But we can at least lay out all the alternatives for you and have all the language in there that needs to be there to satisfy the law and then whatnot. So. Just trying to be helpful for you so that way you'll have that in there from now on.
I, I for one appreciate that. And I'm sure that as Tim watches this, he appreciates me reading.
Yeah, so in, in the, in, in the, in each staff memo that you'll get for each individual project, you'll have that at the end.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's better that than, than us being told, you know, once a year, you guys aren't doing this, right? Can you please, 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 for the eighth time, do this right?
Trying to do it off the cuff. Any board members have any comments?
I do. I formally apologize for not being here at six thirty. That's, uh, that's on me.
Yes, Chuck.
I'll follow on for Rich. I apologize for being tardy. I was completely confused by all the changes, the change in the meeting day, the change in daylight savings and so forth. I apologize. I will try to be on time in the future.
Apologies accepted. Glad you showed up. I have a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Do I have a second? Second, motion to accept the minutes by Ben, seconded by Chuck. All in favor? Hi, three abstained.
Abstained.
Abstained. So it passes three zero two. And do I have a motion to?
Real quick, who were the abstentions? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the abstention was Rich and Patrick.
Richard, thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second, motion to adjourn by Patrick, seconded by Ben. All in favor? Hi, done deal. Have a Merry Christmas, everybody.